Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Commissioners' work session for April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Be calling this meeting to order. If you can please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and Salute to the State Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of Mexico, the ZA symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures.
Thank you. Do we have anyone for, uh, public input? Yeah, we should, huh? Maybe. Next item is approval of the agenda. Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Brown, uh, second by Commissioner Billings to approve the work session agenda. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Do we have anyone for public input? No one for public input? Okay, moving on to, uh, presentations and quarterly reports, if we can, uh, first presentation's gonna be from, uh, Representative Luis de Raza's, it'd be a legislative report.
Good morning, uh, Mr. Chairman and Commission and... Do I have to push the button? What do I have to do here? Push this thing? There you go. Good morning, uh, Chairman, Commission and, uh, elected, thank you very much, and staff. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here. We, uh, we had another wonderful session. And it always has its good things and its troubles, right? But, uh, you know, I want to start out by saying, uh, that we came together and had a very well-rounded, uh, capital outlay expenditures. We did, we did a good job there. But I also kinda wanna go over a couple of things when it comes to capital outlay to remind everyone how it actually works. Um, when we get our capital outlay, I think one of the most important things to, to recognize is that we as legislators have to come together, sit at a table, and make sure that we're working together to co-sponsor. You take this project, I'll take that project, and so forth. And making sure that we don't double-fund a project throughout our district or other districts. And through redistricting here in Grant County, and I'm gonna specifically talk about Grant County, uh, we have, you'll have now one representative, which I've already gone through the election of, of, through redistricting. But you have two senators, all of a sudden, that you'll have two senators in Grant County and one, uh, state representative. So this session, you saw the transition of the senators where they're redirecting their attention to the new, uh, their new district. And so we sat down and we had conversations of how to make sure that not only that we're listening to our constituents, right? And listening to, uh, the, the, uh, prospectors and all the, the municipalities and entities, but that we're, that we're working together and making sure that we're not double-funding something, 'cause we can make a simple mistake of double-funding, let's just say, the, um, Grant County's, uh, Veterans Initiative over at Baton Park. And we both put half a million dollars in there, one of us is gonna lose half a million bucks. And so it's a matter of us working together and balancing those things. But what's important, even though we, we brought home, uh, staggering eighty, about eighty-three million dollars to, to our, to Grant County, um, we gotta remember that it's not just one legislator. That, that, not one legislator does this by themselves. It's impossible to do that. We need both the House, the Senate, and we need the executive to all work together, uh, to make that a reality, right? And what's more important than that, in my opinion, is the support that we have through our county commissioners, our municipalities, our mayors, our counselors, our, our sheriff, and all the elected officials, and the, and the community that comes together to support those initiatives. 'Cause we, if we don't have that support and we don't have that structure, we are only as strong as, as, as the support that we have. So it's a, it's a blessing that we were all able to come together and finally see a reality of Highway one-eighty, for instance. Um, and both in the House, I ran, I, I ran a bill with Senator, uh, well, excuse me, with Representative Jones for, for that initiative. And they did the same thing in the, in the Senate, and we all settled. It all ended up going through the budget at seventy, at seventy million dollars, which is phase two. But, you know, we, on the, as far as capital outlay, I'm gonna cover that quickly. Um, I, when I said it was very well-rounded, I wanted to say, you know, it was well-rounded because we worked on community centers, worked on the hospital, schools, in- including, um, the, uh, including the vocational school. We put, I put some funding there. We've got, um, we, we looked at water and sewer projects, and youth activities like the recreation center. We looked at the fairgrounds. We did stuff for the, for the, um, for, let's just say, the, the, the Cliff Track that was in very, very bad shape. Um, the Gila Community Center. So you just go, go down there, and it was a very well-rounded, uh, uh, money, the, the money that was spent was very well-rounded when it came to, to capital outlay to cover all these things, including the veterans at Baton Park. So, you know, um, I think we did very, very well. Um, uh, in addition, I spent some of the, the, uh, junior money on trying to help our local libraries, something that we kinda forget, right? About our li- libraries. And so I'm in the process of, of getting, uh, fifty thousand dollars to the, to the libraries, fifty thousand dollars for domestic violence to El Refugio, and twenty thousand dollars to, um, SAS, sexual assault, to, to address sexual assault. Some of the stuff, it was kinda funny, I was walking in and I see the, um, Dr. Mister Andasola on the way in. And I was telling him, you know, we, we, I got some, we all worked together, get through funding to make the jail a safer place, right? A safer place where, 'cause I guess you guys are building some sort of a barrier there, um, for safety. So, you know, um, there was other initiatives that I, that I'll, I'll move on to legislation. We have heard a lot from our community on, on addressing the, uh, denial bail or pre-trial detention legislation, where what we know as catch and release, that's something that's a big deal. People getting in and out, in and out, and not being helped. And so we worked on that, unfortunately, it didn't get, uh, very far. Um, there was, um, I had some capital outlay that I worked together with Representative Jones for border security. And you go, how can a state legislator do something for, uh, border security? We talked to the state police, and the state police said, you could really help us if you put, uh, license plate readers all the way across, from Doñana all the way across to the state line. So we, we spent three hundred and twenty thousand dollars on, on, on that initiative between, uh, the junior money that we had. I sponsored twenty-six bills, uh, co-sponsored another eleven. It was a very fast-paced, uh, thirty-day session. Um, and one of the, one of the, the best things that we, that we passed, in my opinion, was, um, HB two-thirty-six, something that we talked to you as commissioners, mayors, council people, the sheriff, the former sheriff. We talked about the need for return to work. And so finally, it passed after four years of initiative. Uh, we were able to, uh, this legislation's gonna help, uh, with public safety officers, so police officers, firefighters, uh, correctional officers, paramedics, court security. We all know what happened over in, 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 uh, in Demi not too long ago, in Luna County, dispatchers. And so those, that was at least an initiative for people that have retired to come back, uh, and go to work. They're gonna participate in still funding, uh, the retirement fund, but without taking a second retirement. A lot of these, a lot of these individuals that retire have to go back to work to cover their, their, the cost of, of, uh, health insurance, for instance. And so they go back to work, and unfortunately, because of, of, of prior legislation, they were not allowed to go back and work in the same, um, uh, retirement programs, right? Retirement para. And so it was, that, we lost a lot of those people. And so you see the, the vacancies that we have throughout the state and even in our, in our county. One of the other things that I, that I fought to protect was our four-day work, uh, four-day school week. I think our, our, um, um, I believe in, in local government, our state bo-, uh, our, excuse me, our school board, uh, to have the, the, the last say-so on, on what their, the schools that they, the children that they res- represent, the parents that they represent, to have that, um, that last word. And so I think that's, that was important. Um, and then I worked on, I, I've been working with Baird and Silver, uh, Silver City, the town of, uh, of Silver City, and the city of Baird, to bring, uh, those baby boxes, you know, the two little baby boxes. I wanted to tell you about that. And I wanted to also tell you that we, I introduced a bill, uh, for expectant mothers. Uh, if, you know, 'cause you look on the website, if you, if you're looking on the website, you're looking, hey, what, what can I do if you're looking for an abortion or whatever? I wanted to have some balance and give people, uh, or women choices in saying, hey, if I wanna keep my baby, where can I get the resources that I need to, to help, you know, me and give me the, the information that I need to, um, to take, if I wanna keep my baby, where do I go? What can I do? And so that was something that we introduced. But, you know, to give you a quick, I don't know if you guys have gotten a quick, uh, or know where Highway one-eighty is. Um, I'll, I'll do that, and we'll talk about a couple of the things that I think are important. Highway one-eighty, we had already funded phase one, uh, which is from Baird to the railroad tracks there in Hurley. Um, there was a, there was a one, uh, I guess there was some paperwork that wasn't completed. And so they had to pull the bid back and re, re-submit. It's supposed to be starting now, so not really we'll see that happening. And so the funding that we're talking about was phase two, was which, which is from the railroad tracks all the way to the Grant County line. So that's what that is. And I think people are really anxious to see that start. And I think once it starts, uh, uh, commissioners, I think we'll probably start getting, uh, calls that, when is this gonna be over? That's usually the way it works. But anyway, uh, I think a couple of things that are real important. I think the vocational center. I think that, we have a lot of work to do, even though we brought a lot of money, uh, to Grant County. I think we need to start working on our VOTEC center, uh, to, you know, focus on those people, those kids that want to find other ways to get certificates and other ways to find a career throughout, other than a four-year degree. And we all can look at it, if, if you called us, get your, a light fixed, or, you know, you need an electrician or a plumber or a mechanic, it's harder and harder to get our cars into the, the, the shops. It's harder to ke- get someone to come and work on your, on your, on your electrical or whatever. And so that's something that's important. Um, the, uh, the last thing I think I wanted to talk about is some of the legislation that was troubling, that I think because of our, our, because of our commu-, our, my, my district and former districts, I have people that, you know, that really struggle and are barely making it paycheck to paycheck. You have people, you have widows that are living on one social security check. And then you have people that are maybe more affluent, and then you have everybody in between. But the reality is, there's, there's a lot of people struggling and are living paycheck to paycheck. The truth of it is, they struggle to, and they're trying to balance how many gallons of fuel they put in their car and still meet their utility bills. We see that. I've seen it. I've seen it at the pump myself. I, 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 I mean, we know what's going on. Um, and so, you know, there were two bills that, that, that I think were, were troubling. One was the, the, the clean fuel standards bill. Sounds really good. Sounds really good. But other states that have passed it has seen, have seen an increase of, of fifty cents a gallon of fuel. And so when you live in rural New Mexico like we do, and you have people that are going to, to the doctor in Las Cruces, and they have to dra- travel two hundred miles, you can imagine what fifty cents a gallon will do to them. And so, you know, I have to think, when, when we're looking at these things, I have to balance, you know, how is this gonna affect the common person? How's this gonna affect the already out-of-control inflation, which has affected our, the cost of our food and other goods and services? So I just, for my district, that was something that I couldn't support, and, and, and our, um, the legislature also didn't, wasn't, didn't pass that. The other one that, that, uh, was, was a bit disappointing, and I, I had got mixed feelings over, was a paid family and medical leave. There were three bills, there were three bills that they had. One was a bipartisan bill, and one was a more unbalanced, I'll say this. One had bipartisan support, one had bipartisan opposition. The bipartisan opposition one, they tried to force through. They didn't bring everybody to the table, and it didn't pass. It, and, and so some of the reasons that it didn't pass is, is, and, and you go back to what I just said earlier, when people are struggling paycheck to paycheck, and you see that this is a mandatory payroll deduction done by the state. And most people don't even know what's happening up there till, till all of a sudden you get your payroll check, and you look at it, you go, you know, how many people, how many of us remember when we first got our first pay, paycheck? You go, what is FICA? What does that mean? You go, why'd they take this money out? Well, imagine another payroll deduction by the state that's mandatory. You wouldn't be able to opt out. It's automatic, and almost every, almost every single, uh, working family would have had to have paid that. And the vast majority of businesses would have had to have paid that. And so, you know, in, in, in efforts to not, to not tax, basically, that's what it is, a payroll tax, uh, those individuals who are, I think, are struggling paycheck to paycheck. And for those, and how it's gonna affect small businesses and how they're gonna have to, uh, res- their response is gonna be to raise their, their cost of doing business. Um, it was something that, uh, we, that I didn't support. Um, it is, it's unfortunate, because there was a, there was a good bill that had bipartisan support, that had a more balanced approach, that had brought everyone to the table, and was something that was more palatable, and, and we could have done that. But when they put a bill in front of you and you ask a simple question like, uh, to the sponsor, and you say, do you have the actuarial work? And if you don't know what that actuarial work is, it's a mathematical, financial, um, study of how much it takes to put into this pot, right? So we use it in, in, in insurance. How much is my premium that I put in this bowl of, of, of money? And how many people are, what is, is it gonna sustain the need of how many people are gonna need money out of that pot to sustain the, 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 the need? When you get an answer of, we're not gonna, we're gonna pass this, and we'll, we're gonna do that study in two years, that is scary. And I told my wife, you know, when I saw that, I was like, I thought of somebody trying to sell you a car, and then telling you, yeah, just sign, right, how much do you want your payment to be? And, and you say, yeah, that payment sounds good. And then I'll let you know what your interest in, what the terms are, how many, how many years you're gonna pay for this. Nobody would do that. And so that's what this was. This is the way that was put. When they can't answer simple questions like that, when I see it's unbalanced, when I see that there's no, um, that it's going to mandatorily tax our hard-working families, it's something that I'm gonna take a pause on. And on this, unfortunately, it wasn't what we needed. So I appreciate, uh, Mr. Chairman and Commission for the, for the time that you gave me here to express some of the things that happened in, 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 uh, in the legislature. Um, if I wanted to tell you everything that happened, we probably wouldn't leave this room till tomorrow. So con eso, I think I'm done, unless you have any questions for me, Mr. Chairman, Commission.
Thank you, Representative. Questions, Commissioners? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to next item of the agenda is gonna be the HMS report. Dr. Dan Otero and Dr. Teresa Arizaga.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, county managers, and, uh, county officials and staff. Thank you again for the opportunity to briefly provide an update on activities at Hidalgo Medical Services. I, I did submit a report, and I basically provided three levels of information for this quarterly report. First is just a brief overview of our three primary services, four actually. Um, activities around medical services or primary care, behavioral health services, and dental services, and of course, family support. I've also provided this time some information on the number of professionals that we've been recruiting into the system to support, uh, community health. So I'll continue to provide that information if you find it helpful with each quarterly report, so we can see the trends on how healthcare is evolving, right? Um, there's a direct correlation between the number of licensed professionals we're able to bring into our community. Um, had, that has a direct correlation on the, the amount of services we can provide to the community and the access point for such services. Uh, the second update that I put in the report was a status update on the opening of the Members Medical Clinic. Um, just, you know, like any project of this nature, um, there's always gonna be barriers that we run into. The most recent one that'll update you since the report came out is, we were notified last week that, uh, PNM needed to move the power pole. And, um, that move required an, an additional easement from the owners who live in Germany. Um, that contact with the owners was made yesterday, so we expect that to move relatively quickly, but that is another slight hiccup in the process. Um, and also, you know, as you read in the report, uh, we're thankful that we recruited, uh, Megan Montoya to be the, uh, nurse practitioner providing services to the Members' community. She's a recent grad. Uh, she's a certified nurse practitioner, a recent graduate from New Mexico State University. And so, um, we expect to have her out there late summer, early fall, if all goes well. And then the final update that I put in my report is, uh, a brief update on services for senior centers. Um, we've had a transition in leadership, um, at the director position. Um, it's been, uh, um, I, I've taken on those responsibilities briefly, and have had great support from the community, from the county manager, um, from Mr. Hernandez, as it relates to the capital outlay. Um, also working closely with, uh, Mr. Marshall, the assistant town manager for the Silver City Senior Center. Um, and got great support from our administrative assistant, uh, Yvonne Gomez, who is probably the most knowledgeable person on senior center operations right now. So also working very closely with the AAA, with Mr. Neil Segota, the director, and our local representative, John Prejean. They've been very supportive. Um, I expect great things to come out of this transition based on the direction that the things are going right now. Um, the two, uh, community needs assessment for the senior centers, both in Members and Cliff, are still scheduled and ready to go. So we look forward to your participation. We will be, uh, um, trying to find out what additional services the seniors may need in the community, and then have a discussion of what we can do to fill that void. So that's my brief overview of the report I put in the packet, and I'll be happy to stand for any questions before I invite Dr. Arizaga.
Thank you. Any question, Commissioner Edwards?
Thanks very much for that report. Appreciate it, and really appreciate the detail. I just have one really quick question, and that is, um, are we ha- so on home-delivered meals, do you have, are you delivering as many as you have budget for, or is there a waiting list at this point?
There is no waiting list for services. That's one of the things I confirm with the AAA to make sure that there is no seniors expecting to get services. Um, as far as home-delivered meals specifically, as you know, they have to qualify and have to demonstrate that they have a need. Uh, as far as I know, there's no, um, concerns on that area or waiting list. And again, if you ever hear of any concerns or get any phone calls, please call me directly. We did have a situation in Members that we resolved immediately, um, when we got it. Uh, there are, the criteria, it's kinda interesting, the criteria, there's a global policy with AAA, and then it's based on capacity, um, to deliver services by each senior center site, so.
Which is directly related to how they're funding you to provide those services, right?
Correct, correct. And, and we're contracted for counter-get meals, home-delivered meals, and transportation. And you'll notice I have an asterix, um, on the report for the transportation, um, because we, I did identify there's some confusion on the transportation piece, but we intend to ramp that up very aggressively, 'cause there's a great need for that. Um, on the recruitment side, I apologize. Uh, we had, I reported last time that we had eleven openings. We filled four of those already, and we've got some more applications coming, and I expect those positions to all get filled. We've also done some restructuring in how we oversee the senior centers and the management of the senior centers. And we've added a position for an events coordinator for both counties to ensure that we're providing social events for our seniors at each site strategically and consistently across the system.
Thank you, Commissioner Medina.
Uh, Dr. Otero, so some, few weeks ago, we got concerns regarding a phone number turning into a long-distance phone call. Was that issue resolved?
The, i- it hasn't been resolved in the sense that it is still a long-distance call if you call directly. Um, and, and I'm not the perfect person to answer this, but I know that we had to transition our phone lines at WNMC. And there were the, there was some contractual situation from the past in which we couldn't keep our local numbers. When we went from our analog to our digital phone lines, which is an internet-based phone line, what we're encouraging all our seniors to do is to call, uh, one-hundred HMS, one HMS, which is our primary call center. And when they're, when they call that number, they'll get connected to the senior center site without a long-distance call.
Okay. Have you educated out there? Have you asked them to do some education regarding that? Because I'm still getting phone calls regarding the phone number.
Yeah, we have absolutely done education across our, our service area, both online, radio, um, quite a bit. And specifically, we have posted that in the senior center sites, and if you get calls, I would respectfully request, refer them to me. I'd be happy to talk to them.
Right, thank you.
You bet. Thank you for your concerns about the phone.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioner? Thank you, Mr. Otero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner.
Thank you for providing us the opportunity to give this behavioral health update, um, Chairman and Commissioners, County Manager. We, I know usually, uh, when I give my update, I go through the different services we have, but I don't know that I've ever gone through the different divisions that behavioral health actually has. And within our behavioral health department at HMS, we have six different divisions. We have our psychiatric services, our psychology services, our, um, I'm sorry, I just messed up the presentation there. Okay. We have our psychology services, our community behavioral health, um, services, specialty services, care coordination, and psychosocial rehabilitation. Within these departments, we have, um, the whole, full spectrum of behavioral health providers, including physicians, doctors in nursing practice, uh, nurse practitioners, therapists, counselors, peer supports, um, community support workers and coordinators. And so recently, we've also been, uh, very blessed with, uh, being able to recruit more therapists and more psychiatric providers. So our behavioral health, um, division is slowly growing, which is really good to help, um, with the need of behavioral services. So we've, at HMS, um, been able to provide services to groups of people who really need these services, especially the most vulnerable. And what we continue more recently to work on is crisis response and how our community needs to, um, to look at how to provide that. And as everyone knows, we've been talking a lot about, um, crisis response and intervention, um, for some time. And so we're looking at what we can do for our community in the future and what we can do now, given, um, this need for crisis intervention. So that's something we've been, you know, a group of us in the county have been getting together. And, um, I, I believe these meetings have been quite productive and, um, hopeful in movement towards the future in crisis response. Um, also, in the packet, I've, um, provided a more specific update regarding our substance use treatment, um, and addiction medicine services at Tu, at Tu Casa HMS. Within, um, HMS, our, um, Tu Casa provides the outpatient services, whether they're groups or individual therapy. They do substance use assessments and also orientation for our MAT program. So within, um, this outpatient program, we had three hundred and eighty-eight visits for the month of March and two hundred and twenty-seven unique patients. Looking at MAT services more specifically, we had, um, a slight increase in the number of unique patients for the month of March at thirty-nine, and, uh, thirty-nine completed visits for MAT. We currently have seven prescribing providers who provide MAT services, both, um, that's combined with psychiatric providers and medical providers. And we have an additional five providers who, um, provide the other services within our MAT program, including the group counseling and individual counseling and orientation, care, uh, coordination of services within this program. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Arturo. Do we have any questions, Commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm looking for, I guess we can come back to that?
If we can come back, and he had some other obligations this morning and was hoping to be here by 9:30, but if we could just pick him up later in the agenda, if you don't mind.
No, we can do it in between one of the other director reports. Okay, moving on to next item of the agenda is going to be the director reports.
Before we get started, can I say something?
Huh?
Before we get started on director's reports, can I say something real quick? I just wanted to acknowledge the Tu Casa board members that came this morning. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. First report, director's report is going to be on our detention center, Mr. Alde Sola.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Following this report from the detention center. We currently have three officers in training, and that leaves us with four officer openings currently. Accreditation update, we did have the accreditation council meeting last month. Grant County's application for accreditation was approved. We did submit the PO. I just got an email this week from the accreditation board, and they're submitting our request to get our power DMS going. So once we get our username and password, we can start uploading our proofs for the power DMS, which should take a couple of months, and then we'll schedule an audit of the facility. This is new to us, so as we learn the process, I'll update you every month. On March 31st, 2024, our population was 86 detainees with an average daily population for March of 83. As of Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024, we had zero COVID positives. Our RISE program, March 2024, had 24 RISE participants with 10 in the facility and 14 in the community. Our future projects, we did meet with the IGNITE program that was presented in the legislative session this year. And what the IGNITE program is, it's a program from the National Sheriff's Association Initiative to help jails replicate a program with the Genesee County and Michigan Sheriff's Office that offers a comprehensive education, job certification, post-incarceration work opportunities, and assistance to incarcerated individuals. The program started by the Sheriff Christopher Swanson and is called IGNITE, which is an acronym for inmate growth naturally and intentionally through education. We're looking at developing this program through our RISE program, including it within our RISE program. I did place the monthly newsletter of IGNITE on your packet in your second option. So they are going to email us the packet for IGNITE, and we're going to look at incorporating that into our RISE program. And it also does come with some grant funding also, so we're looking forward to looking at that and incorporating that in our RISE program. Future projects, we're looking at replacement of the door sliders in the facility and a placement of the pass or food part in the recreation yard here at the end of the month. We are looking at doing an upgrade to our card reader system. And I know that our retention has been a problem, but it looks like we've stabilized our shift supervisors for now, so we're looking at posting sergeant positions and testing and interviews here in the near future. Key event dates, coming next month is National Correctional Officers Week, which is May 5th through the 11th, 2024. And with that, on Friday, May 10th, we'll have our correctional officer celebration there at the facility. We usually have a cookout. The staff votes for Officer of the Year and Supervisor of the Year. I will send an email out to everybody to remind everybody, so everybody's welcome to go have lunch there about noon on Friday, the 10th. Also, our RISE program is having our first annual meeting with all RISE programs in Santa Fe, where we're going to present our program and talk to the different RISE programs within the state and meet and share each other's programs and what we're doing and ideas we have, and that'll be happening at the end of April. And of course, just updating the five-year plan for 2024, 2025. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Alde Sola. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Edwards?
So your comments about the accreditation just kind of went by, but I feel like we ought to get up and do the happy dance for that. It's pretty awesome.
Very excited, little nurse, but very excited, and I think that we've worked really hard for this, and we're looking forward to doing that. We've had a lot of help. Actually, one of the auditors in Las Cruces, Doniana, said that he'd come in and kind of show us a training on the power DMS and how to utilize that. We did spend a day with them previously to look at their power DMS. And I think what we're going to try and do this summer is just have like a mock audit real quick to walk through the facility and make sure everything's going good. But I'd like to thank our staff and the commission and the county for really working on this and moving forward, and we're excited to get accredited and be in an accredited facility.
Well, I think you are to be congratulated for your leadership in getting us to this point, and you and your staff have, I just, I am really, really pleased that we're to this point, and clearly it has been a long, tough road, and your perseverance and your leadership has made it possible, so thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Alde Sola.
Thank you. Chairman, Commissioners, have a good day.
So I'm going to go back up. I saw Mr. Graves walk in, so back up to the presentations. Mr. Daniel Graves for the DWI Teen Maze presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners. So I wanted to give you guys an update on the event that we had in place in February of this year. We conducted our first-ever teen maze under my supervision. It was a learning experience, working with Andrea from the county. She was able to give me some insight into Hidalgo's maze from last year. But the event was an overall success. We had a total of six different schools that attended. We opened up to all three counties, Grant, Hidalgo, and Katrin Counties. Ultimately, only Grant County was the one that participated. But during the process, we had a total of six different schools, both middle and high school. The, through this slideshow, we had different schools will be represented here. We had Silver High, Snell, Cobree, Aldo Leopold, and then also La Plata and Cliff Middle and High Schools. So a lot of students over a three-day period. We did learn that the three-day period probably was a little bit too compact. We're going to expand that out this next one that we do in the future to probably a four- or five-day event. We had a lot of different agencies that cooperated with us, and all there was over 22 different agencies that we partnered with. Everybody from law enforcement to different organizations within the community and the state. We had MAD from Santa Fe, Mothers Against Drug Driving, Trans, they came down to work through the event, the three-day event. Representatives from the detention center, local law enforcement, a variety of individuals. We had over $5,000 raised. Part of that was contributed by our program and our special application. But we also had sponsorships from the individuals that you see here. Small-time sponsors from Kendall and the Wind Foundation and the Women's Club, all the way up to Freeport and Walmart. We were recognized on the Facebook page for Silver Consolidated Schools. Mr. Hawkins came through the event and was able to get some photos for us. They were very pleased with the event, as you can see in the post. And again, if you get a chance to go and look back over the posts on the Silver Consolidated Schools, it gives you a more in-depth on the students, their experience there. We were also recognized in the Grant County Beat for the event. Again, a great slideshow was presented there on the event itself. Some slideshow photos from the event itself here. A variety of students over those three days. Silver schools, middle schools were primarily the first day and a half, and then it transitioned into high school. So we had specific components for each different area. We had DWI arrests, the victim impact panel, and MAD organization to give a better understanding of how DWIs impact the community. We had representatives from YSEP Coalition that worked with us on the alcohol section and gave information on alcohol and substance abuse. The state police provided pedal carts. The students really loved that out front. They were able to utilize the pedal carts with drunk goggles to see how it impairs their ability to drive.
With what?
The National Guard was a big contributor as they brought their individuals up from Doniana County, focused on vaping and the marijuana section. They have a good component and provided a lot of great information there. The DEA came in to talk about fentanyl. There, again, they provide the expertise in that field, and we're able to fill in students on the dangers of fentanyl as it is a growing issue in the community. Jail, the detention center here provided us with Sergeant Galindo and some of their new trainees to help us with the jail section. We conducted or constructed a jail so the students can get an idea of what jail life is all about. The district attorney's office came to help us with the court section to inform them on the legal aspects of substance use, as well as APO, JPO, and our court compliance officer at the program. And then we had a variety of agencies touching on domestic violence, sexual assault, nutrition, healthy choices, everybody from El Refugio, New Mexico State and the extension office, to early beginnings, a variety of agencies to help inform on a lot of different topics, as well as teen pregnancy, and then also distracted driving and mental health. So we covered a wide spectrum of problems that teens face, everywhere from substance abuse all the way up to the mental health crisis that we see on a day-to-day basis for our youth. Even permanent issues like death that can be associated with drunk driving and alcohol use was also touched by paralysis. And then also job opportunities in college for upcoming years and when they transition from school into the workforce. We also did a post-survey to get some data for upcoming events in future years. Our evaluator is still processing that, and we hope to get those results back soon. In all, we had 711 students. We did reach out to approximately 1,100 students, so we ended up with a very solid number. It's a lot bigger than past events, but we're hoping to move forward, probably transition more into a middle school and high school alternating years, so we can focus more on the content for the students and cater it more towards the individual age group that we're working with. And then our contact information, and I stand for any questions.
Mr. Graves, I just want to tell you thank you for nothing but good compliments on this. And I'd like to thank everybody in the community that was involved and all the agencies involved. Really appreciate it. You guys did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anything, questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Did you want me to do my? So to give an update on our program as of right now, we are conducting, well, DWI school has been secured for the county. We were looking at becoming the DWI school provider. I reached out to an outside agency that is better established within the state of New Mexico, is already set up for DWI school. It worked out better for us, and they were able to get up and running a lot quicker. That is the Transportation Safety Foundation, and they are up and running as of April 5th, and we're back going as far as DWI school in Grant County. The WNMU event that we were preparing for fell through. We were not able to communicate and establish the actual foundation for that through WNMU. We're going to work on fixing that problem for the upcoming years. Legislative bills, we are working very closely with that. I am the affiliate vice chair for the DWI affiliate this year, so we are working to bring together two of the primary supporters of bills and the ones that instituted the bills this past year for the DWI funding. We will be meeting with them in June in Las Vegas to hopefully put together a bill that will not only work for both sides, but also pass through the House. Again, we had our teen maze event. We are looking at supporting possibly Hidalgo's maze. Right now, we have been asked to take over that maze, but I was reached out to this morning by Hidalgo Health Council to see if they could take over that responsibility for the Hidalgo maze. We had the Health Week event at WNMU. I'm doing driver's ed. That's why I was a little bit late this morning, coming back from Cliff. We have the SAS Survivor Run on the 13th, Aldo Leopold Prom on the 20th. Compliance training for myself and Roxanne will be in Hobbs the last week in April. And we have Cobree's Prom and our Grant Council meeting in May, so April's a busy month for us. But we are just moving forward. Future projects include, we have an accident DWI car that we have secured to use for future events that we can take around in the community to bring awareness to DWIs and the problem that we're facing. It is still under investigation, so the car hasn't been released to us, but once it is, we will be able to utilize that. It is a vehicle from an accident in the community. So once that's cleared up, we can start getting it out there so people can see the impact it's had. And then we're just working on our trend, our prevention trailer design and possibly purchasing a new vehicle as well. I stand for any questions?
Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, going on with our county reports, our emergency manager, Mr. Scott Fuller?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I'll try to keep it brief. Going through my current projects, one of the main ones we've been speaking about for quite a while now is the Hazard Mitigation Plan, the update and getting FEMA approved. We selected H2O Partners as the vendor. Yesterday, I had a lengthy meeting with the project manager. About an hour and a half, we had a lot of things to talk about to get the project going. And yesterday, I provided her quite a bit of historical documents to go off of, and we're looking at a May timeframe for the kickoff meeting for the plan. So it's moving forward finally. On the 29th of March, I submitted a grant to New Mexico Counties for the wildfire reduction program grant. And I sent in a two-part part of it. One part was for public outreach and education. And it kind of dovetailed in with the second part of, the second grant I put in, which was a fuels reduction part of it also. So I got submitted on the 29th. It was approved by the Bureau of Land Management. So I'm looking forward to get, hopefully get that grant approved come June. And future projects, one of them was really important was I'm going to apply for a hazard mitigation grant, and I'm looking to get two generators, one for the convention center, which serves as our emergency sheltering. It'd be nice to have a emergency generator, backup generator to supply heat, electricity, et cetera. So talked to Jason about that. Is we're looking to get 1,000 K generated for that facility. And the second one, as you know, we approved and y'all have approved. And the second one, as you know, we approved and y'all have approved, the Aldo Leopold Building was purchased and I guess that's going to be the new Burnt operations center, the Sheriff's Department, et cetera, is going to be housed there. So I'm getting a generator for that building also, so probably a six hundred K for that building. So I should have that submitted sometime in May and keep our fingers crossed. The key dates, as you all know, the 24th to the 28th tour of the Hila Bike Race. I've been in discussions with the folks involved with that and I think we have our last medical meeting August, you know, April 10th concerning that. And one last thing, the IPP, the Integrated Preparedness Plan, the revisions due with the Department of Homeland Security on the 26th of April, I should have that done next week and send it to them also. And one note, since we were talking about schools, there's regional school reunification training at the conference center on May 1st for anybody interested, so I didn't have that in my notes, but that's something I'm doing regionally on the 1st of May. If you have any other questions, I try to keep it brief, hit the highlights.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on to next report, it's going to be our County Fire Chief, Mr. Groves.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Roger Groves. I've been on the job just over two weeks. My first twenty-four hours was a trial by fire, for real. We had a structured fire, an engine was rolled and firefighters were extricated from the vehicle. All were fine. The engine sustained significant damage and that happened the first twenty-four hours, so I was pretty busy. I'd like to thank Mr. Fuller for keeping some of these projects going, the current projects as he was filling in. Currently, our membership, I did some calls the other day, we're currently at two hundred and sixteen volunteer firefighters, give or take a few. I know the departments mostly met yesterday and they were voting on new members at several For the first quarter of the year, our volunteers responded to sixty-seven fires, two hundred and fifty-one EMS calls, seventeen other. Other, I'm assuming, are probably some lift assists, some false alarms, cat in the tree, which does occur, and calls along those lines, for a total of three hundred and thirty-five calls for the first quarter of the year. So they're busy. Training, they've been training, all of the departments, I tried to come up with an average for you. It looks like we're just under two thousand hours for the first quarter of the year in training in various subjects, the structure, wildland, officer training, driver training, EMS and extrication. Some of the current projects, we did get our second distribution for VFDs from the State Fire Marshal's Office recently and that's going well. Everybody's making use of their funds. We're wrapping up our wildland training, refreshers are coming to an end for the larger part. We may have one or two refreshers, but as we start to get into fire season, it's really hard to get instructors to come do a refresher or a class because they are getting sent to fires. So we'll look at that, possibly we'll have another one in the fall, but we recently are in the progress of completing a full S-130, 190, which is a wildland training, that's a required training for anybody that's going to be on wildland fires. They will wrap that class up this weekend. I'm not sure how many students there were, but I understand there were probably at least twenty-five, which is good for us. So that's going forward. I'm ensuring some of the action plans that were put in place to correct efficiencies at a couple of our departments are being done. We've made some tremendous strides at Cliff Hila and I was told this morning that our water tanks that were part of these requirements were set and in place now and they're hoping to have that plumbing work done within the next few days. Some electrical upgrades that were also identified by the State Fire Marshals are moving forward and I believe maybe there'll be some discussion later about our new chief that has been elected to take over the reins, Preston Johnson. And he has assistant chief is BJ Agnew, which some of you may know who was a chief for twenty-some years out there. So we're in a good place now with our leadership. Some key events are, as I mentioned, we're completing our wildland refreshers, our S-130, 190 classes are being done. We've done, we have a pre-Iso that is coming up with our Pino Salto's Fire Department that got, by the way, so we don't have a scheduled date just yet, but that'll happen probably this month. I'm participating in tour of the Hila with Mr. Fuller and the meetings that have occurred for that event. I did, one other item I added to the key event dates is with Mrs. Winger, we established a training schedule for our ARF team at the airport and we'll be out there training every Wednesday with the crew that's there. And I will need to do a recert on my ARF certification and we have one member that will also have to go to the ARF School in Dallas-Fort Worth and we're working on getting some of those dates shored up so we can get that accomplished. Future projects, working with our, I did some, looking at our training and identified some areas that we need to brush up on, obviously. I'd like to improve the firefighter first aid, which is a class that used to be presented by the Fire Academy and hasn't been for years. So if we can put together some training on the local side to provide a little bit better firefighter first aid. We did receive some documentation from Mr. Thornton with EMS Bureau identifying the need to have firefighters assisting EMS at calls and oftentimes they'll be there first. So we want to improve their skills, making sure that they've got some basic things to do, certain things they can act outside their scope of authority or training, but the basic stuff until EMS folks can get on scene and take charge of patient care. So that's moving along. I did have several conversations regarding that yesterday with a few different folks and would like to get something set up real soon to get some training out to the VFDs. Also, I've met with our instructor who's assigned to this portion of New Mexico for the State Fire Academy and we are working out some things to improve and bring to the county more structural firefighter training. We're lacking in that. All of our departments are lacking in that. So we need to touch on that and work at honing those skills and getting training for the newer folks that haven't had an opportunity to do any of the structural training. Some of that can be accomplished here. At some point, we may have to have some folks go to Socorro, but we'll do as much locally as we can. We're working on some things for having pack testing done, which, you know, we need that for some of our folks to participate with the Forest Service and some of their fires and, excuse me, and training. So we've got some things there we need to iron out with that whole process, but we're looking at that as well. So if there, I'll stand for any questions, make sure there may be some.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners?
Welcome.
Question? Commissioner?
Thank you.
Hold on, Chief.
Oh, sorry.
You have one question.
I'm sorry.
So Chief Groves, thank you very much. Welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
We are, I think, really, really excited to have you be doing this job. Thank you very much. I just have one question and that is, so you mentioned at the beginning of your report that we have approximately two hundred and sixteen volunteers, some coming on, maybe, how many do we really need to have? Are we fully staffed, mostly fully staffed?
All of the departments right now have the minimum required of twelve. They all meet that, every one of them. Some departments have fifty-five, some have only twelve. We're, out of the twelve, I mean realistically, we have twelve members. Your core group is probably going to be four or five who are running the calls. There's members on all, every department that are just there on paper, we're not seeing them. Do we need them? Yes. Most of the departments don't set a quota. It's kind of open in the bylaws that they can set their own numbers. I'll just say, I'm a member at Tyrone and have been for many, many years and sometimes it's, you know, you'll have two, three people show up and the next fire you might have fifteen or twenty. It just varies. We're seeing a lot more of calls where we're getting more of the automatic and mutual aid departments are coming out to help each other because the numbers are down. So to say what set amount we should have, they have to have at least twelve. And that's a requirement that the State Fire Marshals have placed on the departments to maintain the operations.
All right. Because we've had a fair amount of conversation about whether we have enough volunteer firefighters in the county and I think your explanation is good in that we may have numbers that aren't actually active also, but this is a lot of calls. What you described is a lot, it seems like a lot of calls to me for a call.
I was surprised there were sixty-seven fires.
Yeah.
And that's everything, structure, wildland, garbage fire, you know, dump. We've had fires at the landfill, but I was surprised we had that many already.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Medina?
So Chief, welcome. Thanks for taking the position. It was well needed. I do appreciate you making the comment about the basic first aid for firefighters. I understand there was some question regarding response to EMS calls when you have non-certified people. Volunteer firefighters, the majority of times, don't have the opportunity to take the EMS training, so the first aid, the CPR, the tourniquet training, the stop the bleed, that makes them available to cover an EMS call. The worst thing we can do is advise people not to respond because they don't have any EMS license. Sometimes it takes opening an airway that's taught at the basic level, so just keep that program alive and you need any assistance from me, please let me know.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I'd like to add that I'm excited about being here too. I had to go home and rest a little bit after the first twenty-four, but yeah, I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next director, it's going to be our Finance Director, Ms. Vasquez.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fuller. For my report, I'd like to inform you that we will be going out for an external auditing services. This RFP will go out on the 11th of April and it'll be due on the 22nd of May. And then I also like to report the schedule for the upcoming budget fiscal year. The budget hearing is scheduled to be held on the 23rd of April, which will be done prior to the work session and then discussing further the budget on the seventh work session with the preliminary budget approval on the 21st and of course, in between, if you would like to have any additional dates added to that.
All good?
Hmm?
All good?
Just a quick question.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Linda. Are we likely to have the third quarter report before our May 7 work session, do you think?
I can provide it to you, but it won't actually be presented until the May 7th work session. So I can provide you a copy of it prior to...
If you could, when you think it's ready enough to provide, that would be helpful.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Moving on to our IT Director, Mr. Paco.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Forgive me if you can't hear me very well, I'm in the unique situation of suffering from allergies. For our current projects, we've been working on the computer lab PCs. They came in and we've been working on configuring them, getting them ready for deployment and this is for the computer lab over at the Business Conference Center. So we're prepping those and making sure they're in a position to where we can have ease of use for that system there. So there's a little bit of work behind the scenes that we have to consider as well for getting them on the network over there and making sure that they're properly managed with antivirus programs and we also have the vision into those to remotely support them. So we're currently working on configuring those and we're hoping that they can be ready for deployment by the end of this week. So afterwards, we can start talking about getting them in place and giving them a test run and making sure that they're functional. Recently, I applied for the grant with the Secretary of State and that was with the assistance and really the guidance of the Clerk's Office. Since this building acts as an election office, we have the opportunity to take advantage of some grant money that could be made available for us with an appropriate justification, excuse me. And some of the angles that I took on this application were the idea of beefing up some of our networking devices that would essentially allow us to have redundant devices, just in case one of them died for whatever reason. After all, they are electronic components and they can at any moment. The idea of having a redundant active unit in place that could just take right over would allow us to have a better, more seamless networking experience, especially during election time. So I'm hoping to hear back from that very, very soon. We're currently working as well on a formalized solution to handle public records requests. That's actually now in its implementation phase. We're starting with setting up the appropriate users. Christie has been working primarily leading the charge on this, but we are working collectively. So this ultimately will be our solution that will allow us to handle IPRAM requests. We were able to find a solution that it was reasonably priced and right up our alley as far as the things we were looking for that would allow us to better handle those requests that come our way. So we can anticipate having our kickoff call here relatively soon to start talking about implementation and routing of requests and how we can handle that within the organization. And finally, we've been working on preparing the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2025. Now, as regards future projects, these remain the same. The idea of virtualizing our physical servers and also started some great conversations with our Tyler Eagle account representative on what it would look like to migrate our, all of our Tyler Eagle services. Now, once again, this would involve the services that are utilized and provided by the assessors, the clerks and the treasurer's office. So that would be quite the transition from where we exist now over to the future goal. So right now, these are some initial conversations and working out some of the fine details as well on what this would involve and how it would affect the offices here. So it was a great conversation that I was able to have with our account rep and get the idea on making sure that they're aware of what we're looking to do. Relatively short report, so I stand for any questions.
FYI for FY25, we have no money. Stay out of the conference.
Well, that makes it straight and simple. Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions? Commissioner Edwards?
So just remind me, the whole Tyler Eagle migration conversation is about making all of our Tyler Eagle services on the cloud, correct?
That is correct.
Including the virtualization of the physical service is the same thing? Getting it all on the cloud, correct?
Well, the, the virtually, virtualization of physical servers is essentially within our building here. And that would be for other services that we provide, such as authentication to log into our network, making sure that we have domain controllers, those types of things. We already have them in place, but it's sitting on infrastructure that's very old and needs to be replaced. So those will be virtualized and moved to our new server infrastructure. They're two separate efforts, but fundamentally, the logic is the same.
That's the part that's hard for me to retain, the logic of the technology of all this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you ask Commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Baca.
Thank you.
Moving on to our Planning Director, Mr. Hernandez.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Under my current projects, for their Colonial's projects, Little Walnut Road, Phase 1 construction, that one is being wrapped up, we are hoping to achieve final completion by April later this month. We're just pending some punch list items. Curren Road and Frank's Road, I'm still pending a design feature proposal from our engineering firm, and hoping to have that by the end of this week. North Hurley Road, Phase 3 construction, the bid documents are being prepared, and then they will be reviewed by our procurement officer, and we hope to release that bid either later this month or early in May. For our grants under Department of Finance Administration, the Baton Park Veterans Memorial Walking Path, we're currently reviewing quotes from contractors under price agreements, and at that point, we'll make a determination whether we want to move forward with that, or if we have enough time to rebid that project. Hamilton Bridge replacement design, the design is 60% complete, and we're on track for June completion. Baton Park's Mall Field turf replacement, I'll let Jason touch on that one, the Polyworks Director is working to get that, that project completed. Capacity support, Inside Network is working on grant opportunities and technical support with our IT Director and Emergency Manager. They're also working on standard operating procedures for streamlining processes for pre and post awards, grant awards. Conference Center Computer Lab, Mr. Baca touched on that, so I won't repeat that. Department of Transportation Grants Swimming Tank, that one is also wrapping up, as well as Truck Bypass Final Completion, and they are just attending punch list items. Under the EDA Grant, we still have the Workforce Development Trainings open. Registration is, is, is still open for certified fiber optic tech, customer service, hospitality, and those registrations can be accessed on our website, or they can give my office a call. We also receive proposals for a contractor for the comprehensive plan, those are being reviewed, and we hope to have an award recommendation for you in May. The OJL Brontos Project bids are due tomorrow, and we hope to have that on your May agenda for award as well. Upper Membras Volunteer Fire Department Underground Water Storage Tanks, pre-construction meeting is set for Friday, and then construction will start shortly thereafter. The Southwest New Mexico Collaborative, I'll be working with the facilitators to interview key partners and groups on their outdoor recreation efforts, and then we will begin prioritizing recreation projects across that region, across this region, I'm sorry. My Code Enforcement Officer's Quarterly Report is there from January to March. She currently has 20 active cases, and you'll see the generalized areas with the map. For future projects, those have remained the same, all three other are Colonial Submittals, and the Ridge Road will be a TPF application. Support, I have two items on the agenda for Thursday, and then we'll wait with the District Attorney's Office and a resolution for application submission, I'm happy to talk about these later in the meeting. Under my key event dates, here in a couple of weeks, I will be in Anthony presenting our three Colonial's project submittals. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Randy. Questions, Commissioners? Thank you. Moving on to the next reporter, County Manager, I mean County Airport Manager, Rebecca.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. For our current projects, we're doing airfield maintenance, it's a constant for us, but at this time of year, we try to focus on getting our navigational aids spruced up, and it's all about airfield safety. I put a couple of pictures in there, you can't really see, great. Couple of our dirt runways have displaced thresholds, and we literally have tires out there that we paint in patterns of yellow, so that when aircraft are coming in, they can see that on their approach. And then our segmented circle, just, the sun here just eats everything, and so we go back out and repaint it annually, so that, you know, again, it's just a really good visual. For our future projects, we're finalizing our paperwork for FAA grants for this year. That'll be for airfield lighting design, and our testing system for our firefighting foam, that'll allow us to not discharge any foam for testing. It's all a closed system. We should have our funding for those in May. The design for the airfield lighting should be complete in November, and we will go out next year for construction. For briefings, we currently have just one Type 1 helicopter, that's their setup there in the top left corner, that's Rotac Aviation. They were with us last year. They're not on contract yet with the Forest Service, they're kind of just putting themselves in a place where they can respond if needed. And then Healer Regional Medical Center had a trainer come over to work with us to do our CPR AED first aid training, and we were happy to have Fleet Management participate with us, so everybody got their training up to requirements. And then our request for support, again, working with Fleet Maintenance, we have a 2006 ARF truck that, so 17 years old, and it's got leaks and other things, but we're not able to take it out to have work done on it, and so Cory set it up so that we actually have a mobile mechanic coming in, tomorrow actually, to work on it. We do have, our other truck is on order, we got a $650,000 grant from the state last year, but everything, supply chain, we're looking at maybe a year before we get that truck. And so we really need to keep this one up and working, so. Any questions?
Commissioners? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our Fleet Maintenance, Cory?
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. For March, our completed projects, we did 25 PMs, 29 diagnosis repairs, seven tire replacements. We had one dealership warranty repair, one windshield, and one blade, we replaced cutting edges on. For April, our projects are finished PMs on the road heavy equipment for chip ceiling, airport mower deck repairs on their mower, those are ongoing. Managed installation of a new two-post lift to, and remove the worn-out two-post lift there in the shop. Prep and install accessories on the new blade operator pickups, they should be arriving this month. And we've started our fluid sampling on the new cap blades, every 250 hours, we have to pull samples on those. Key event dates, as Rebecca mentioned, three of our employees at Fleet Maintenance attended the CPR training with the airport, and we have one final employee who's going to be trained tomorrow to finish our crew. We've got some pictures on the next slides that, there's a bunch of old oil barrels there at the Road Department Yard. We noticed that a lot of them had oil or fluids of unknown origin in them from over the years, it's just unsightly. So we've got all these barrels pumped out into a, a larger storage tank, and all the old barrels were just laying down for now, so they don't collect rainwater or anything. I'm still waiting to hear back from Safety Clean, they're going to send me a sample analyzer kit, so we can analyze what actual fluid we have in that bulk storage tank, and then we can get it recycled and pumped out. So just some yard cleanup there that's been kind of neglected over the years. And then up in Little Walnut, we had this, it's the RD-27, it's a pneumatic pavement roller. It had a hydraulic failure on it, and instead of having cap come out, we self-performed that work. It probably saved us, I'm guessing, close to $5,000 just by self-performing that repair. That's pretty much it for Fleet. Stand for questions?
Thank you, Cory. And thanks for, I know me and the County Manager have had conversations on the yard down there on Ridge Road. Thank you guys for all the effort in cleaning up, because it's a, it's a not very good site there.
Yeah.
Really appreciate that, thank you.
We're making progress.
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Cory.
Thank you.
Moving on to our Maintenance, Mr. Jason? Do you guys have any? No questions, right?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Have in front of you the Maintenance Report. So our back bathrooms behind the chambers is 98% complete. Hopefully you guys have been back there to check them out and see how they look, it's a big improvement from what they were previously. We're working on a concession stand roof. I had some, I think there was just some subgrade contracting that went on back in the day when that thing was built, so we are fixing the roof over there, so nothing continues to fail. Have some water leaks. This week currently, we're doing a Level 3 PM on, on the generator at the Detention Center. That includes the belts, fluids, all of that good stuff. Working on installing a concrete ramp on the north side of the courthouse for easier access to the grounds. Baton Fields, the Maintenance Crew has really come a long ways and got those up and ready for the upcoming tournaments, all the Little League practices. There was a big, huge tournament this weekend that was held there, went through on Sunday, parking lot was packed, so it was really being used. Turf replacement, trying to get a revised quote for that replacement of that turf on the upper field that we have the money for. The first one initially came in, there was kind of a miscommunication, they wanted to redo the whole field, as in dirt and all infill, but that came in close to about $1 million, so we did not have that kind of money. So revise that quote, we're working diligently to get that completed. Administration Fire Riser and Sprinkler upgrades, I do have some pictures of that on here, let's see. As you can see in the slides, the, the left view is the old valves that were here from, I have no idea how long, we're talking 30, 35 years. And so we were able to make the left slide turn into the right slide with a little bit of magic, had a contractor come in. So I have a new fire riser for this building, can also note all the sprinkler new valves that are in this building as well, and there was over 300 of them at the ceiling height level. So you'll notice the new white ones instead of the silver ones, they had a 20-year life. The life was ran out on those, and so we are, got these new ones installed. The next big project for that that we've identified is sprinkler heads above the ceiling, up towards the rafters in this building. Those have about eight to nine years left of life on them, so that would be something we were planning, be planning for in the future. Red infill dirt for Baton and Cliff is being delivered currently, that was about 80 tons of material. And so Jay, the new maintenance survivor, new maintenance supervisor, he has met with Little League out there and Cliff, and so we have a big, a big, long list of items that we're going to try to catch up on and get that place looking in good shape for them. Under future projects, these remain about the same. We have the laundry room washer upgrades, reconfigure the Detention Center. Baton Park Electrical Service upgrade for pavilion vault toilets, ceiling tire replacement at East Hardware, Manager's Office break room remodel, reconditioning the arena at the fairgrounds. Letters for the current slide that you see, the letters are on order, I think they were due to be shipped this week, so that should be done in the next couple of weeks of having the proper verbiage on there for that facility. Key event dates, those are about the same for what we had last month. As you can see, these are the concession stand roof, some deferred maintenance with that back gutter that you see on the right-hand side. They never even took the, the metal over the edge of the wall how it was supposed to be, and they stuck out some things in place. So we're redoing all of that with some flashing and getting that looking better, so it's not failing.
Is that Baton?
That is a Baton, the concession, concession stand at Baton. Correct.
Some were sticking when they were doing that, weren't they?
What other pictures we had on there? I stand for any questions?
Do we have any questions, Commissioners?
So are you currently taking, taking out turf, or that's future?
It's future, yes. We have not taken it up just yet, it's about, I'm, I'm hoping we're going to commence in the next couple of weeks.
So have you considered the feasibility of what you're going to do with the old turf?
It's about wore out, so there's really not much, I mean, we could, could give it to people, or, you know, like, how we could dispose of it, maybe not give it to people, but dispose of it properly, and see if there's a way that could do something, but I would not recommend repurposing it for anything else.
Okay, thanks.
Under the Road Department, I'll be giving that one as well. So blade operators are still on routine maintenance, taking advantage of the moisture when possible. In the month of March, operators average 150 miles of bladed roads. The road crew did pour a sidewalk on Tortonite Drive in Tyrone, replacing the uneven and broken sidewalk. The road crew is continuing to trimming the trees on various roads, and also hauling the chips for the upcoming seal projects that we have scheduled. Under future projects, we are doing some patching today. The hot mix plant is back up and kind of, kind of running, semi-running, so we're taking advantage of getting some of that material and catching up on some patching. Some key event dates, the operators participated in, participated in rainwater management techniques with stream dynamics. Just a couple of pictures of a forest road here. That, it's just learning new operations on how that you can slow water down and not do so much erosion on roads, and, you know, with making different approaches and angles and, so stream dynamics, the crew is out there looking at all of that, and so it was pretty beneficial for the crew to see those things, and maybe putting some new practices in place when they're out there blading the roads. I stand for any questions?
Do we have any questions, Commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the end of our reports, there? County Manager? You know what I was thinking, and, because I see some of these, some of our, our staff wanting to get to work and all that, and I don't know if these other Commissioners agree with this or not, but I was wondering if we can split these Director's Reports with this work session and the last work session of the month, if that'd be okay with you guys? Because I know sometimes the last work session of the month's a little lean, and it keeps some of these guys, because they, they're looking like they need to get stuff done, they're just looking at me, so.
Good idea.
If the Commissioners agree with this, so, can we do that?
That'd be great.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Really good idea.
Okay, moving on to review of the regular meeting agenda for April 11th, County Manager, it's all yours.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have the agenda for Thursday, April 11th in front of you. First items of action are proclamation. First one is consideration of proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Item B is consideration of proclamation for National Correctional Officers Week. Item C is a proclamation for National Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. Moving on to presentations, you will have a presentation from Teresa Villa with the Cobre Parent Center to give an overview of that program, and a certificate of recognition to our DWI Program Coordinator, Daniel Graves. You'll have your quarterly report from Dr. Fred Fox, the Board of Trustees, the Healer Regional Board of Trustees Chair, and your regular monthly report from Robert Whitaker, GRMC CEO. We have three sets of minutes, March 12th, March 14th, and March 26th for your approval. Moving on to financial reports, item I, consideration of expenditure report dated April 2nd. Linda, if you'll review that, please.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, in your package you have the expenditure...
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your package you have the expenditure report approval. This covers the period from March sixth through April second. And in this is included AP checks of four million, one hundred thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred twenty-six dollars and nine cents. And payroll checks totaling five hundred twenty-five thousand, nine hundred one dollars and eight cents. With a sum of four million, six hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. And then there you have that list of all those checks that are above the ten thousand. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, item J, consideration of new Cliff Gila Fire Department Chief Preston Johnson and Assistant Chief, Robert BJ Agnew. Roger mentioned this, the department held elections at their last regular meeting and have elected Preston as the chair, BJ as the, or I mean chief, and BJ as the assistant chief. And it's the county's process that the commission ratify those elections. I think this is, as Roger mentioned, this is a huge step in the right direction and Preston has accomplished more in a matter of a week than's been done in years. So he has the best interests of the community at heart and he's working really, really hard. So I would encourage you to please approve those elections. Next, item K, consideration of the donation from Valencia County Fire of a twenty sixteen International Structure Engine. Roger mentioned his first day on the job was a little bit unfortunate, so we do, we are down a structure engine for Fort Bear Fire Department. Valencia County has a twenty sixteen engine that is suitable for our use and we would like for you to consider acceptance of the donation of that truck to fill in so that we have, we're able to replace that engine. We are unsure the status of the one that was in the accident, whether or not that's repairable or the insurance will total it. Repairing a fire truck is not like repairing a regular vehicle, so we're still working through that with the insurer. Item L, we have consideration of bargaining unit contract for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six. We do have a final draft, however, we are waiting for the union to ratify that contract first. That is the process, the union ratifies it, then we put it forth for your vote. In my email conversation with the president this morning, they will be having a meeting to vote on that contract and he promised me an answer by the end of the day. So I can't tell you whether or not we'll be tabling that or taking action on that on Thursday, hopefully taking action, but that's where that stands. And moving on, oh, sorry, are there any questions? I'm just flying right through this. I'm not asking if you have any questions.
I'll answer the one I have about the insurance.
Okay. Moving on to agreements, item M, consideration of agreement A twenty-four eleven. This is an MOU with the Sixth Judicial District Attorney's Office for the finding a use for the veterans van. Do you want to explain what you have in mind?
Chairman and members of the board, if you recall, I think it was during the twenty twenty-two legislative session, the county was awarded funding to purchase a veterans transportation vehicle. We did purchase one in February of twenty-three and we've been trying to find a suitable use in a home for this. In discussion with the District Attorney's Office, the Department of Veterans Affairs Clinic here in Silver City, as well as the Department of Workforce Solutions. We kind of put our heads together and with the arper dollars that you guys allocated for the District Attorney's Office for the veterans, veterans and mental health pre-prosecution diversion program, they determined that they could have a use for this vehicle to transport veterans to and from their appointments within that program. Part of the conditions that we, as the county, have asked is that it, that it doesn't only apply to veterans that are, that are within that program, that they do provide transportation services just to veterans in general within our region. And they were happy to do so. This MOU has been reviewed by our attorney as well as the deputy district attorney and they are okay with this. So at this point, I stand for any questions?
No, thank you.
Next is item N, consideration of agreement A twenty-four twelve, property management service agreement amendment number three. What this is, this is a yearly renewal for the agreement that we have with the Chamber of Commerce for Management of the Conference Center. All of the terms and conditions are the same. This is just renewing it for an additional year. Questions or comments on that one? Next, item O, consideration of agreement A twenty-four thirteen. This is an MOU between New Mexico State Fire Marshal regarding the use of office space at the Silver Street Complex. I was contacted by Derek Rodriguez with the State Fire Marshal's Office looking for suitable office space for a position that they are hiring that will be stationed in Grant County. It'll be a fire inspector position. And what they do in several other, with other local government entities is they just be an exchange of space with no rent. So we do have a vacant office in the Silver Street Complex that is suitable for housing this individual. And so what this MOU does is it provides office space in lieu of no rent. It's all outlined in there. So this is something we do as government-to-government entities. And the office is just sitting vacant, not being used, and I think it's beneficial to have someone like this stationed in Grant County. Stand for any questions on that?
Thanks, Jerome. Mr. Chair. So you said exchange of space, but it's just giving space. We're not getting some of their space or something?
No.
Where have they operated out of until now?
There has not been, this is a new position within the State Fire Marshal's Office assigned to Grant County. So we have not had an inspector that is specifically stationed in Grant County. This is new.
Is this related to the fire at Mr. Horton's former place? Another state fire marshal was going to inspect that and it was taking a long time. I'm just curious about the timing.
I'm not sure. I know that the State Fire Marshal's Office has been doing this throughout the state. I worked with them in a very similar manner when I was in Sierra County and so they're just, I don't know that it's directly tied to that or not, but it's just something they've been working on and been doing all over the state.
Probably would have been really handy to have disposition here three months ago, so I guess I'm glad it's happening now. Thank you.
And that has been, that agreement is a format that is suitable for approval by GSD, which requires GSD approval and our attorney has looked at it as well. Next, item P, consideration of agreement A twenty-four fourteen, El Rio Soul Transmission Line Community Benefits Agreement. I met with John Strawn, who most of you remember being with Sanzia. He is now working for Rio Soul. This is a community benefits agreement nearly identical to the Sanzia Community Benefits Agreement that we entered into. The Rio Soul is the second line. If you remember back from Sanzia originally was two lines. Sanzia line is currently under construction. Rio Soul has taken over the project of the second transmission line, runs parallel to Sanzia. So we are looking at basically the same type terms. It's a five hundred KV line, approximately a little over twenty miles that will cross through Grant County, very similar terms as the Sanzia. The draft is there for your review. I won't go through all the details. Same, same type terms and conditions, so I would encourage us to consider entering into that agreement. Any questions on those?
I have no issues with the agreement. It's great for the county. I'm curious if you think Mr. Strand will be making another presentation on this or is it so similar that he's just going to leave it go?
I will leave that up to you. I'm not sure that it's worth him coming. He has offered to come and speak to you, but there's really not any significant differences whatsoever. You've heard about, you've heard about the line. The only change is it is now being constructed by Rio Soul and not Sanzia.
I think if I can find his email, that'd probably be enough. He doesn't have to come here. I just wanted to ask him something. Do you, do you happen to have that in case I?
I do. I can send you his contact information on his phone number.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to resolutions, item Q, consideration of resolution R twenty-four twenty, amending the approved and adopted budget for fiscal year twenty-three. Linda?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. There's the bar for approval, recommendation for approval. The first one being budget increase for the Cliff Gila Fire Department in the total of a hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And this was based on a request from Scott and from the fire chief at the Cliff Gila Fire Department. This is needs that they felt that they needed for the department to bring it up to date. The next one is a budget increase for the Fort Bear Fire Department in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars and this is to purchase bunker and wildland gear. The next one is a decrease in the grant match monies line item for the local assistance, LATCF funds. And that is a transfer out of five hundred forty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. It's not a transfer out. We did the transfer in the last meeting, which was for the Colonius Projects Match. This is just decreasing that line item. The next one is increasing revenue and expenses by a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars for the Algea Appropriation Economic Recovery Grant. The next one is an increase in revenue and expenses of a hundred thousand dollars. And this is for the detention center, the old detention center asbestos abatement grant. The next one is a transfer out from the airport fund into the runway and taxiway lighting and design grant. And also decreasing the grant match monies by nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. So the revenue increase for the airport grant is one hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. And increasing expenses by a hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and a transfer in of nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. Any questions?
It's good to meet.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Next, item R, consideration of resolution R twenty-four twenty-one. This is for the New Mexico DOT TPF, project supplemental authorization for Ridge Road Phase Two. Randy?
Chairman, members of the board, before yours is a resolution, this is the project that the county intends to submit for the Department Transportation TPF funding cycle. This is, will be the same as the Colonius one. We're just trying to double our chances to see for this. This one does have a five percent match, so this is one, authorizing the submission of that application. And two, it is committing the five percent match. And I stand for any questions?
Thank you, Randy.
Next, item S, this is resolution R twenty-four twenty-two, adopting a fleet management policy. Andrew has been working with Cory over the last several months on developing a fleet management policy which provides some guidelines to effectively and adequately maintain our fleet. The draft was sent on a separate email to you outside of this for you, for your review. I, I think we've covered, we've met Cory's needs to be able to give him some tools to manage our fleet, give us the ability to actually plan for replacement and some accountability measures in there for those who actually use the vehicles and some requirements around proper maintenance, et cetera. So I don't recall seeing any comments from the draft that was sent out to you, so I'm assuming you guys are okay with it and we would like for your consideration of this policy. Okay, next, item T, consideration of resolution R twenty-four twenty-three, resolution in order approving request of El Rio Soul Transmission LLC to use certain roads in Grant County and other matters. This, once again, is very nearly identical to the same resolution in order that we adopted with the Sanzia project. And so as you know, there are considerable heavy truck traffic, construction traffic associated with the construction of these utility lines. And so what this does is it allows Rio Soul to make any necessary improvements to our county roads. And requires them to leave them in as good or better shape as prior to construction. So very similar to the previous agreement and I would recommend approval of that. And if there's not any questions on that, that concludes your agenda for Thursday.
Commissioner, it's your turn.
So given our experience, our recent experience with the culvert on the bypass road, this agreement will cover us in the event of a similar situation in a way that we were not covered with NMDOT, correct?
Correct. So this, if they damage anything as a result of this, but these are on dirt roads, so it's a little similar, or little not as similar as that, so we don't have any major infrastructure like that, but yes. So also if they determine that our roads, say we did have a culvert like that, that wouldn't hold up to that amount of use, then it would be their responsibility to replace that and bring that road up to standard to be able to accommodate their heavy construction traffic.
And then it's up to the road department to look at those roads when they're done and make sure that they're in acceptable condition before we close the project, right?
Yes, so it would be a matter of our road department being out there regularly and meeting with the designated representative that's usually assigned to those projects to make sure that, you know, we're both doing our part.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, County Manager. Moving on to commissioner reports. Do any commissioners have any reports?
That's a good approach. I've got some.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Mr. Baca, I have in the past, thank you for the new website. Continue to appreciate it, but I wanted to bring to your attention that the ordinances section and the resolutions section need some updating. You're aware of this?
Yes, yes, images with better quality and the ability to zoom in and get a better idea on the designation of the, of the actual responsibilities, yes.
Okay, well, and I'm thinking of ordinances more recent than twenty nineteen. Be put on in any resolution, in resolutions more recent than twenty twenty-one.
We're aware of that. We know we're behind on several, several of those areas and so we're just trying to find staff that has the time to go in and get those loaded, so we're working on it.
Yeah, from, from the outside, it always surprises me that it takes a long time, but this happens in other, other roles I have in the world. Takes a long time to update a website, but I'm glad you're aware of it and I really appreciate that this is moving forward. We've wanted this for years. One of the reasons that this came to my attention, I was looking for the abandoned vehicles ordinance that I believe we passed in June of twenty twenty-two. And I'm asking that question because I haven't yet found evidence that we did in fact pass it, just that it was on our agenda. Do you happen to remember Ms. Webb or anybody else on the commission if we passed the abandoned vehicles ordinance? It came very soon after the abandoned buildings ordinance and for the life of me, I couldn't remember if we passed it or tabled it. Okay?
I think you were considering that. I wasn't employed here, but we can, we'll track it down.
That's correct. You were not here.
We'll track it down.
I think we probably did table it for some reason.
Yeah.
And then never came back to it.
I think we might never have come back to it in, okay, well then I'll continue briefly on my report. I've had inquiries from a couple, from Silver Acres and one from Tyrone about abandoned vehicles and what we can do about it. The code enforcement officer has been to these properties and has informed complainants that there's nothing she can do about it. Which of course made me think, hey, what happened to that ordinance? So that, this is preliminary. I just want you all to know. If in fact we tabled it, I will be interested in bringing it, yeah, exactly. I'll be interested in bringing it back up. If in fact we tabled it, I, I will be interested in bringing it, yeah, exactly, I'll be interested in bringing it back up. Uh just to let you all know, that maybe you'll be talking about that, I know Baird had a, a recent issue with a. Not exactly abandoned vehicles, but with vehicles, uh in, that were possibly a nuisance, okay. So we'll take a look at that. Uh and my last is, I wonder if I could get a reminder again. Uh from the county manager, where we're at in the discussion of the trails and open space implementation, what, what's the next thing?
Uh in our session, um I just have a conversation with the. Um Southwest Collaborative and I've not been able to do that, um their meeting is after this meeting, so. I, I will be having that conversation and following up.
So maybe Thursday we'll hear something about that?
It won't be before Thursday, it's, it's next week, so um probably May.
All right, thank you all very much.
Any other commissioner have a county report? You know, I just wanna tell whoever worked on the Grant County Newsletter. Very nice, it was great, really appreciated. I really enjoyed wa, uh reading that and looking at it, so. Whoever had any part in that, please tell them thank you and uh it, it's very nice, I appreciate it.
It was fun to get.
That was Amy Lockett put that together, she worked really hard on it, so I'll make sure she knows that.
Yeah, tell her thank you, that was awesome.
Yeah.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Thanks for bringing that up.